Hello, everyone, and welcome to today's virtual town hall focusing on the vaccine. Our speakers today are Dr. Joseph Cantor and Ginger Hunt. Dr. Cantor is the State Health Officer and Interim Assistant Secretary for the Office of Public Health. Dr. Cantor serves as the lead public health official for the state of Louisiana and advises the governor on COVID-19 prevention and treatment. Ginger Hunt is a nurse practitioner specialist and the founder of a nonprofit network of 11 federally qualified health centers across five parishes. Ms. Hunt was inducted into the Hall of Fame by the Louisiana Nurses Foundation and is a recipient of the Louisiana State Nurses Hero in Nursing Award. Dr. Cantor, thank you very much for being with us today. And could you tell us what we need to know right now about the vaccines and the status of their distribution throughout Louisiana?
Steve, I will do my best, and Ms. Hunt, it's really a pleasure to be here with you. So thanks for joining us as well. I will just give a quick update of where we are with the vaccine. And then I do want to also talk a little bit about what the variant is doing in Louisiana, because that's keeping me up at night amongst many other things these days. The vaccine rollout is going well. We just need more vaccine. That's the bottom line. But when you look at how Louisiana is doing compared to other states, we consistently have been in the top tier in terms of how much we administer on a day-by-day basis as a percentage of how much we get allocated. Vaccine is not sitting on shelves. It's going out to people very quickly. And at this point, that's the name of the game, is to make sure that every dose is used and not lost. There is a big milestone today that I just got word of really a half an hour ago when the new numbers came out. And I want to share it, and probably the first audience I'm sharing it with. We, as of today, have initiated the vaccine series. So given first doses in more Louisianians than have been diagnosed with COVID throughout the entire course of the pandemic. That's a really, really good milestone. We've initiated vaccine in about 448,000 Louisianians, just shy of 10% of the state's population. So it's been a really long, hard 10 or 12 months. Finally, we can see what the end looks like. And it looks like people are getting herd immunity through the vaccine, and we're on our way. So that is really encouraging news. Of those 48,000, about 190,000 have completed the vaccine series, gotten their second dose. So total shots and arms that we've given is about 637,000 doses. Equally impressive to me, although I don't know if others would feel that off the bat, we have enrolled over 2,000 vaccine providers throughout the state. Now, it's somewhat of a two-sided coin on this. We don't have enough vaccine to give to all of those 2,000 providers. These are hospitals, clinics, pharmacies, and some other types of providers. On any given week, we don't have enough vaccine to give to these folks. But what we're doing is building a network that we will employ once supply picks up. And let me talk a little bit about what I mean with that. You know, we kind of had a choice in the state of how we wanted to approach the initial few weeks of vaccine administration. We're in week eight or nine right now. And, you know, some states have started with big events. We decided to start with a broad and wide network of vaccine providers here for a couple of reasons. Number one, it allowed us to put vaccine in all 64 parishes. So there are vaccine providers throughout the state. And it allowed us to target very specifically higher needs areas, marginalized communities. As we find out about populations or areas or neighborhoods that are not well-served by existing vaccine providers, we can go in there, we can bring other providers on board, we can send a strike team out, we can do things to help connect people who have barriers with vaccine. You lose that ability when you just do the big events. The other thing is, we actually feel pretty confident in our ability to run big vaccine events in Louisiana because we plan for it every year. Every year with flu vaccine, we drill for it. We hold mass vaccination exercises with flu vaccine that serves the dual purpose of connecting people with flu vaccine and practicing these public big events when we really, really need it. And I think we have some expertise on that. We were more concerned about bringing on this wide network of vaccine providers, some of which have never been a partner with the Office of Public Health before. It involved enrolling them, onboarding them, looking with the CDC for that enrollment. It actually was a fairly involved process. And so on a per capita basis, we've enrolled more providers than most other states have. That's going to come in handy for us. Because down the road, when supply of vaccine picks up, and it will pick up at some point, we're going to need to do it all. We're going to need to have the big events that we're looking forward to. We're going to need to have small providers, clinics and pharmacies in every corner of the state, all administering vaccine altogether to be able to meet the demand. What we're doing is bringing that harder part on piece now so that when the time comes, we'll be ready to activate the network and we'll go. I think this strategy pays dividends for us down the road. It's done well so far. But people always ask, why aren't we having events? And the reason is because we would have to pull vaccine from the existing providers to do that. And the existing providers are doing quite well. We're moving, again, more vaccine per capita than most other states are at this point. And that gives me encouragement. It gives me encouragement that when the supply does pick up, we'll be able to use it quickly, which is what we need here. Make no mistake, vaccinations and the herd immunity that we will obtain through vaccinations is the way we get out of this pandemic. It's the offering. You know, building up herd immunity, getting somewhere between 65, 75% of the population vaccinated is how this pandemic abates. And what we have to do is make sure that we don't waste a single dose, that we get there as quick as possible. There is some encouraging news coming down on the horizon. There's a third vaccine that is applying for FDA authorization. It's the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. It's different from the existing vaccines in really two ways. Number one, it's a more traditional type of vaccine. It's the Moderna and the Pfizer are on a messenger RNA platform, which is a little bit new, which have been working very well. The Johnson &amp; Johnson is a more traditional type of vaccine. And the second way it's unique right now is that it's a single-dose series. So that's really advantageous. One dose, and you're vaccinated. You shouldn't have immunity within a couple of weeks after that. Don't have to come back for a second dose. So it's easy to see how, once this Johnson &amp; Johnson comes out, it'd be very applicable to doing large events. Because it'll be easy to do a single dose in those settings, and that makes a lot of sense. They're going to be, the FDA is going to be meeting on February 26th to discuss their authorization. We expect them to authorize it because the preliminary data that's come out is very good. And then we should see that come into this state, hopefully, by the beginning of March. No way to know for sure, but that's something for us to look forward to. All told, the capacity of Louisiana to administer a vaccine and the demand for vaccine far exceeds our supply right now. That's unfortunately where we're at. We're at a position where we're asking the federal government for as much vaccine as they can give us because we know we can give it out quickly, and we know there's need. The biggest population that's eligible right now is 65 and older. But we are anxiously trying to get to other populations. We know people with preconditions, medical conditions, are at increased risk of complications with COVID. We're anxiously waiting till we have enough vaccine to get to them, as we are for teachers. We just need more vaccine to make it practical. And that's what we communicate with the federal government every time we have an opportunity to do so. But I am encouraged. I think Louisiana is doing very well with vaccine rollout. And again, when more supply comes, we're going to be very well positioned to make the most of it. I want to talk a little bit now about what the virus itself is doing and why I'm concerned about what's going to come in the next few months. And then I'll end by asking folks for some help in this. You know, we clearly peaked around Christmas and New Year's time with all the travel and the gatherings. And thankfully, we're now coming down the other side of that. And actually, today, we have, for the first time since Thanksgiving, less than 12,000, presumably 1,200 hospitalized COVID patients in the state. We've been above that really since Thanksgiving. So we're coming down the other side, but we're still very high. We're still very high. And when the CDC ranks risk of community transmission, they look at two measures. They look at how much new diagnoses come in on a week. And anything above 100 new cases per 100,000 residents over a seven-day period is high. We meet that bar in all 64 parishes right now, by the way. And they look at percent positivity. And anything above 5% positivity is cause for concern. And all but 12 parishes are above 5% positivity now. So if you look at the CDC's risk map, all 64 parishes now are red. The risk of community transmission is as high as the CDC gets. So we're going in the right direction. We're just very high. And that means for people in the public, the risk is real. The risk is real. When you go out and go about your daily life or meet with people, the risk of contracting COVID is about as high now as it ever has been. And people need to know that. They need to take precautions. We need to get as much transmission suppressed right now as possible because on the horizon, we have these variants. And the UK variant, or the B.1.1.7 variant, is already in Louisiana. We know for sure we have eight confirmed cases. We have 24 additional tests pending with the CDC that will likely be positive. It's going to happen well. And I can tell you with assurance that that's just the tip of the iceberg. And the reason I can say that is because in the U.S., we very little, what's called genetic sequencing. We actually take the virus and figure out what genes are in there as opposed to just being positive for COVID or negative. And that's really the only way to know if you're dealing with a variant or not. We do very little. Some European countries do a ton. We do very, very little. So just like a year ago, when COVID just started for us, when we had a few cases diagnosed, we actually had a whole bunch circulating that we didn't know about because we weren't doing a lot of testing, it wasn't available. That's analogous to what's going on now. When we're able to definitively diagnose eight cases of the variant and say we have 24 cases pending in the state, that means we have a lot, lot more that we just haven't formally identified. We know a few things about this variant. We know it's more transmissible, perhaps up to 50% more transmissible. We know that it potentially is making people a little bit sicker than the other strains were. And the reason we know that is because the UK, which just is getting out of a very big spike due to the variant, saw a higher hospitalized rate per COVID-positive individual than they did with previous spikes that they had. And thankfully, we believe that, to the best data to date, that the two vaccines we have now, the Pfizer and the Moderna, are good matches for the variant, effective with the variant. And that's important news. But the bad news is that this variant is spreading very quickly. And the latest data from the CDC shows that it's doubling in number in the U.S. every 10 days. So an exponential growth. We march that out, it means that the variant will be the dominant strand in the U.S. sometime in March, most likely. And to be blunt with people, we probably have another spike in our view in Louisiana because of the variant. Now, this is somewhat disappointing news to me because I had hoped, and I think most people have, that we would come off of this spike around New Year's and be able to slowly go down until the summertime, when we hope to have enough vaccine out there to create herd immunity. And then that would be how the pandemic dissipates for us. I don't think we're going to be that fortunate. I think we have another spike ahead of us before the summertime. I can't say exactly when. I would bet sometime in March, maybe late March. I really couldn't say more specific than that. But I do think it's coming because this variant is going to replicate and replicate, and it is more transmissible. I have two takeaways from that. Number one, we need to do everything, everything we can right now to drive down transmission while the numbers are going in our favor. While they're going in the right direction, we got to push them farther and farther down because the lower we start this spike, if the next spike does happen, the better off we'll be. The lower we start, the lower we finish. If we start high, we're going to end that much higher. And as we've seen with this last spike, the mortality is real. We now have over 9,000 people dead in Louisiana from COVID, and we lost 1,000 people in the past three weeks. That's unacceptable. We have to do everything we can to prevent that. The more progress we can make now in driving down transmission, the better off we'll be to weather this additional spike if it comes. What does that mean for people? That means doing all the mitigation measures, distancing, masking, avoiding travel when possible, being very careful if and when you gather. Those things are more important now than ever because we have to set ourselves up to weather this potential next spike or else it's going to really overtake us. And the other thing we have to do to prepare is to make sure that no dose of vaccine goes wasted. We got to use every single dose. We got to use it quickly because every single person that gets vaccinated, that's one less person that might get hospitalized, or one less person that might die from COVID. There are a lot of myths out there about the vaccine. Most of these myths have absolutely no basis. In fact, I'll tell you what the facts are. These vaccines are extraordinarily safe, as safe, if not better, than anything else on the market right now for other diseases. They have absolutely no effect on a woman's fertility. They're likely 100% safe in pregnancy, and I think the data is going to show that. And the side effects are better than or equal to any other vaccine that's out there. It's challenging to get that from the media because there's so much attention on this. Any small side effect in one person somewhere is going to get blown up in the media. But with the millions and millions of people that have been vaccinated right now across the country, incredibly small number of side effects, and when they do, it's usually resolved fairly quickly. So these are extraordinarily safe vaccines. We know what COVID does. COVID puts people in the hospital. These vaccines are very, very safe. So my closing ask to you is, if you have questions, take the time now about the vaccine. Take the time now to get them answered. Find some time with your primary care doctor or provider. Link up with a clinic, whoever it is that you respect about these type of issues. Find some time to talk to them because I think you will be assured if you have concerns. I don't want anyone to pass up their opportunity to get vaccinated. I've heard too many stories of people that didn't take their opportunity, that were 65 and above or 70 and above, decided to wait, and then either themselves or a loved one got COVID. I've heard that multiple times now, and I don't want that to happen to anyone else. So take the time now to seek out experts, get your questions answered, be prepared so that when your ticket comes, when your place in mind comes to get the vaccine, you're ready to roll. Because we want you to be protected, we want your family to be protected. That's really my ask to you right now. Steve, that's what I wanted to share. I'm so thankful to be able to talk to everyone, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Dr. Cantor, thank you. And I think what we'll do is flip the format a little bit because we have some questions coming in. So I think it makes sense, based on the presentation you just made, to address some of those now for consistency's sake. One simple was a statement, not a question. Please allow teachers to be vaccinated as soon as possible.
Yeah, and for loud and clear. We're trying to get to that. I mean, we're very cognizant that, and also mentioned, people with underlying medical conditions are a high priority as well. We're very cognizant of not just giving access on paper and not having the doses to make it practical. That's going to make confusion, to make a lot of frustration. But once enough doses are there, that's high on the priority list. I want to assure people, and we all feel very strongly about that.
Is there any concern about antibody dependency with this vaccine?
I'm not 100% sure where the individual is going with that. You know, what we do know about the vaccine is that it's very effective for the strands that are circulating in the U.S. right now, for the dominant strand and for the, whether it be the UK or the B.1.1.7 variant. It's highly effective at that. One thing people should know is that it does interact with monoclonal antibody treatment. If someone has it, so if someone receives monoclonal antibody treatment, they have to delay the vaccine for about 90 days, because it's real and you're clear with that. But for someone that just has COVID, as long as they get out of that 10-day infectious window, they're good to get the vaccine. They can wait if they want to because they probably have some innate protection. And the CDC says for the first 90 days, you probably have some innate protection. So you can wait if you want to, but you don't have to. If you've had COVID recently, let's say a few weeks ago, and you've recovered, and you're now eligible to the vaccine, you're 100% safe.
This attendee writes, "My job includes interior visits in homes. If I receive the vaccine, do I need to alert homeowners that I've received the vaccine?"
Yeah, there is no possibility to contract COVID just by getting the vaccine, nor is it possible to give COVID to someone else just from getting the vaccine. These Pfizer and Moderna vaccines, they don't involve any live virus. No live virus. It is physically impossible to either contract or transmit COVID just from getting the vaccine. Now, sometimes what happens is, you know, it takes a couple of weeks after you get your last dose to obtain full immunity. So you have some, you're not protected until you get to two weeks after. So I have heard some people get the vaccine and then get COVID the next day because they were exposed before they had full immunity. That's to be expected. Doesn't mean that the vaccine gave it to them. So there's no need to broadcast any of this at all.
Dr. Cantor, Karen has some questions about mass vaccinations. Do you envision for the state that there will be a mass vaccination at some point? Will attendees still have to meet the current phase criteria? And if there is a mass vaccination event, how will that person schedule a second shot?
Yeah, there will be. There will absolutely be. I think we're kind of calling them different names, mass vaccination events or large community vaccination sites, or it's all the same thing. But a place a lot of people can go to get vaccine, absolutely, without a doubt. We're just waiting on enough doses to be able to do that. We hope that when the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine comes online, maybe three or four weeks from now, that that'll be an opportunity to do so. It'll be actually logistically easy because you don't have to worry about the second dose, the Johnson &amp; Johnson, one dose, and you're done. When we do events, the second doses, it'll be expected that if you go to an event or a vaccine that requires two doses, that you essentially go back to that site 21 days later for Pfizer, 28 days later for Moderna. But ideally, we can do these events with the Johnson &amp; Johnson because there's no need to do that at all. There absolutely will be events, the events will be in all parts of the state. We're just waiting for enough doses to be able to do that.
Well, Bridgette states, "I thought the Biden administration was going to send vaccines directly to the pharmacies. This was supposed to happen this week. Will y'all, presumably the state of Louisiana, send out a list of the pharmacies that are getting these vaccines?"
Yeah, it's actually already accounted for in the public list that we put out of where vaccines are sent. So what the Biden administration did is they accelerated the timeline of what they call the Retail Pharmacy Program. This was already in the works. They just bumped the timeline up a little bit. And each state is matched with a partner. So we're matched with Walmart. And now there are 57 or 58 stores, I can't remember exactly, Walmart locations in Louisiana that are supplied with vaccine. This week, this first week, we supplied them directly from our state's allocation to get them going. And then starting next week, they'll be getting supplied directly from the feds. The feds have a say in where those Walmarts are. But we will list them amongst our public list. From the public's perspective, it doesn't make a difference. It doesn't make a difference if the store got their vaccine from the state or from the feds. It's vaccine that's available, and we'll make sure it's listed in the public list. All the stores still abide by the state's eligibility. So the eligibility criteria of 65 and above and so forth holds no matter what type of vaccine provider.
Dr. Cantor, Nancy says she heard that the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine may not be quite as effective as the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines. Is that true?
It just depends how you quantify it. And when you look at what really matters, how it prevents people from being vaccinated and how well it prevents people from dying, it's equally effective, 100% effective at preventing mortality, and 95, 96, 97% effective at preventing hospitalization. That's, those are the numbers that really, really measure. It's challenging to compare these studies because each study has a little bit different endpoints. I know it's gotten some run in the media, but it's misleading because what you really care about when you get vaccinated is knowing you're not going to get very sick, and knowing that your chance of dying is less. And by those measures, the Johnson &amp; Johnson is extraordinary, just like the other two vaccines we have. Really, I'll tell you, a few months ago, we would have been happy with a vaccine that was 60% effective. And many vaccines are. You know, flu vaccine every year is sometimes 50, 60% effective. 60% is a good year for flu vaccine. Not a lot of vaccines are upwards of 95% effective. I can only think of one offhand besides COVID, and that's the measles vaccine, which is 98. Having 95% efficacy is a grand slam for vaccines. We're very fortunate that, you know, we have two and soon to be three vaccines that meet that bar, particularly for what really matters, which is your likelihood of getting sick and dying.
Barry asks, "Is there an expected date this year when you believe we may cross the tipping point, the capacity tipping point on vaccinations?" That's a crystal ball question.
That's the Oregon dollar question. I don't, you know, I mean, I think I had to put money on it sometime in the late summer, early fall. And that's assuming that everything goes right. You know, that's assuming that there's no delays in vaccine production. So we get what we should get from the feds, and assuming that we play our cards right, and we don't waste dosages, and we have a good delivery mechanism, which I think we do. I think it's probably best-case scenario. Might be a little bit later than that. They'll come after me if it is, but that's what I'm hoping for.
Are you doing okay on time, Dr. K? You have time for a few more questions?
Yeah, it's all your time.
Are funeral directors considered first responders?
Not considered first responders. If they are involved in the direct handling of corpses, then they are included right now as really part of the healthcare team. It's just a different aspect of it. You're dealing with a potentially infectious body. If they're not directly involved with handling of corpses, they're likely going to fall in, as you said, to frontline workers, which is in the next tier coming up.
Is there any concern about the South African variant of the virus, especially since Houston just had its first case of it?
Lots of concern about it. So the other neighbor is the B.1.3.5.1 variant. We know, so as of this morning, and I think this is before the Houston news came out, the CDC was saying there were a total of six confirmed cases in three states. I think it was South Carolina, Virginia, and Maryland. The Houston case I've not seen yet. If it is new, that's news to me, which is concerning, no question. It, one of the real concerning things about the South African strand is that it probably is not as good a match with the vaccine, which is going to give us some trouble. Doesn't mean it's not a match at all, and it's not all or nothing. So we think the vaccine still provides some protection. It's good, just not as good protection. It's still low in numbers. We're still learning a lot. I don't know how easily it transmits. I don't know if it's more transmissible or less transmissible. But we'll have to keep a very, very close eye on it. I think in terms of risks in Louisiana, the first risk, more immediate risk now is this B.1.1.3, B.1.1.7, or UK variant, which we know is already here. It's in larger numbers, almost 700 confirmed cases nationwide, and again, doubling every 10 days. I think that's probably first in terms of concerns. But the South African is out there, the Brazilian variant, the P.1. variant is out there too. We'll just have to watch that very closely.
Danny wants to know, not this Daniel, but one who wrote in, an attendee, Dr. Cantor. If I received both COVID shots, is it safe to travel?
I mean, I wouldn't say anything's 100%. And look, when you have vaccines that are 95% efficacious, that means they're 5% not efficacious. So nothing is 100%. That's why herd immunity is important. You get enough vaccine coverage out there, it drives transmission down, drives the cases down. But I would never tell someone that they're 100% protected. That would be, give them false assurance. I still think you need to mask and distance even after you have the vaccine. But I think, look, if you've been vaccinated, I think it's certainly more safe to travel for you than it was before. No question about that.
If I've already contracted the virus, is it still necessary for me to still get the vaccine?
It is. It's very clear now that we're seeing people get infected twice. I've actually, I work as an ER doc, and I've seen people, actually a couple of people being infected for the third time. So reinfections are real. Usually, the patient does better clinically during the second infection. Usually, it's not as bad as the first, but reinfections are real. So we do think, even if you had COVID before, there's benefit to you to get into vaccine. You'll have more protection afterwards.
Can someone who gets the shot still transmit the virus to those who are not yet protected?
That's a great question. We don't know. And I'll just be completely open to people. We don't know because the two studies that initially were done for the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccines didn't really look at that. So we can't say for sure. I think we all presume it probably does. But right now, that's a presumption. There's ongoing studies to look at just that. And listen, if I had to bet, I would say probably it's going to show that it does decrease the chance of transmitting to someone. But until those studies are done and until the data is out there, you are still going to see the CDC recommend that people who are vaccinated continue to mask and continue to distance.
Tamara wants to know what phase of vaccinations will high immunosuppressed citizens be able to move forward?
Yeah, again, very similar to teachers. We're really trying to get to those individuals as quickly as possible because we know that they're at much increased risk for complications. We're limited right now just by the supply. We're limited right now just by the supply, but, but I would expect them to be amongst the very next people who get vaccinated.
And this one comes from Rebecca, Dr. Cantor. She says if a person has had the first vaccine and is due for the second dose this week, is it okay to get the second vaccine if they're having sinus issues, congestion, runny nose?
Uh, you know, I would actually wait a little bit. You know, I think those, we don't want people to get, get a dose of the vaccine if they're currently infected, like actively infected with COVID. And we know that upper respiratory issues like sinus infection can be a sign of COVID. Can be a sign of allergies, can be a sign of everything, a lot of other things too, but it could also be COVID. So I would say if people have symptoms like that, any symptoms potentially suggestive of COVID, wait until your symptoms abate before you get a dose of the vaccine. You don't have to wait months. Just wait until they abate.
And you've just answered Shannon's question, how long should a COVID survivor wait until being vaccinated?
As long as you're not in that initial 10-day window. The CDC says you can wait 90 days because you probably have some protection, but you don't have to. And I would say, listen, if, if you have the opportunity to get vaccinated, I wouldn't, I wouldn't delay it.
And Dr. Cantor, I know you get this question a lot at, at news conferences as well. Do you see changes coming soon in recommendations for vaccinating pregnant women?
I do. And it's just an issue of the data. So, you know, there, there's not a real recommendation out there right now because, you know, most studies during initial studies, you typically don't enroll women who are pregnant for obvious reasons. They typically get enrolled after safety is established for the general population. That's been established now. So now there are trials looking specifically at women who are, who are pregnant. What we do know is there are a number of women who were captured in the initial trials despite being pregnant. They got pregnant after they got a dose or unbeknownst to, to getting a dose and they have had no complications. We also know there are thousands of women since those trials who have gotten vaccinated and have now given birth through the normal channels and have not had any, any complications. There's been no signal, no, no increased risk of complications beyond what you'd see in the general population. So there's absolutely no reason to think that the vaccine is harmful in pregnancy. In fact, there are lots of vaccines that we prioritize for pregnant women. Flu vaccine, we make a point to giving to pregnant women. And so there's a good basis. There's absolutely no reason to think that it's harmful in pregnancy. And I'll tell you just on a personal basis, my sister-in-law is expecting, I advised her to get the vaccine, she did. We're actually expecting, my wife and I, and once my wife becomes eligible, whenever her ticket is, I'm going to encourage her to get it as well. So I think we'll see data coming out soon. And when the data is out there and shows that it's safe, that's when you'll see a real formal recommendation from the CDC. But right now, pregnant women are able to get it, they're eligible to get it. I would always advise people have a conversation with your obstetrician or your nurse or your, 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 your midwife. Always have a conversation, but there's absolutely no reason to think that the vaccine is not safe in pregnancy. And just on the other side of that, we know what COVID does in pregnancy. There's no question about that. Pregnant women who contract COVID are at increased risk for preterm labor and increased risk for maternal complications. We know that. And so that does need to factor into people's decisions.
I know we're running beyond our time and I need to tell Ginger Hunt. Ginger, I promise we're going to get to your presentation in a minute, but we want to continue rolling with these questions as, as long as Dr. Cantor is available. We only have a, a few more, Dr. Cantor, from, from the attendees. And thank you to the attendees for asking some great questions. This one involves children and specifically children with respiratory issues. Will they get the vaccine in the future?
In the future, for sure. I think i- in the future, most kids will, but we've not yet had it approved for kids. The Pfizer vaccine is authorized for 16 and above and the Moderna for 18 and above. And it's just because that's what the cutoffs were for the trials. So both of those companies have now extended trials to include kids, younger kids. Once that data comes in and gets looked at, then you'll see the FDA extend their authorization to kids younger than 16 or 18, and that's when they'll be eligible.
Kristen asks, how long is the vaccine good for? And do you have to get the vaccine every year like the flu shot?
Kristen, that's another billion dollar question. We don't know. And the reason we don't know is because there just hasn't been enough time. There are some vaccines that you need boosters for, there are some that you don't. And the only way to really know is to have the experience of looking at what happens to people who get vaccinated. Do they then become susceptible 16 months, 18 months down the road? It's possible. I'm not going to say it's not possible. It's certainly, certainly possible. The way that Dr. Fauci talks about this, which really resonates with me is, look, if we find out a year down the road that you need a booster every year or every three years for COVID, so what? So you need a booster. It's a lot better than, than, than living in the pandemic. But again, that's, that's, that's just a question. We don't know the answer yet.
We have two questions related to the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. One, is it a live vaccine? And then RE wants to know, being a single dose vaccine, a one and, one and done, is it safe to say this vaccine may produce more side effects because it's stronger? Or is it just a more overall efficient vaccine?
The second part of that, no. There's no reason to think that it's, creates more side effects. And I, I wouldn't even say it's stronger. It's just a different type of vaccine. It is an attenuated virus. So they take an adenovirus, which is, you know, kind of one of the common cold viruses that are out there and, and attenuate it to make it harmless and use it as the vaccine vehicle. That's actually a more traditional way of making vaccines. A lot of the vaccines we get are, are made that way. So it's well studied. It's well known as something very familiar to us. We've not yet seen all the documents that they have released to the FDA. We will, the FDA will release those ahead of their meeting on the 26th of February. So we'll see all of it. Once those documents come out, which is the source data, we'll get a much better sense of what the side effect profile is. I don't expect it to be any worse than existing vaccines.
Do you have a percentage of protection or effectiveness after only the first dose before you get the second?
It's a great question as well. You know, so for the Pfizer and the Moderna, you build up protection slowly after your first dose and get about somewhere around 80%, maybe 75, 80% protection roughly, give or take, before you get your second dose. Your second dose does two things. It cements your protection, so it brings it up to 95% and then it gives you durability to make that last longer. So there's some discussion about there, well, maybe if we just give one, one first dose and don't worry about the second right now and we can cover more people that way. But the problem with that is you don't get as much protection, number one, and you don't know how long that protection lasts. And if that protection weens after a month and a half or two months, then that's been a real, you know, penny wise and pound foolish endeavor for everyone. So it's, it's very important right now to get that second dose because it really does increase your protection and, and give you durability, make that protection last longer.
Mary Lou says she's sensitive to some medication. She's allergic to penicillin, also to certain pain medications like Dilaudid, Endomeral and Codeine, sulfor drugs can, cannot, she says, can I take the vaccine?
Yeah, yeah, you can. I'll say if you have anaphylaxis to those drugs, if you've had anaphylaxis to penicillin or the other medicines, anaphylaxis is a very severe allergic reaction that requires attention in a hospital, you know, potentially fatal. If anyone has had that, they absolutely can get the vaccine. We just ask them to get it in a more acute setting, like a hospital setting where they can be treated quicker if they need to, even though the rates are very small. If they haven't had anaphylaxis, that they've just had a minor, minor reaction like a rash, they can get the vaccine anywhere.
Karen asks, this is a clarification, Dr. Cantor. She said, I didn't hear what Dr. Cantor said about meeting the criteria. Is that a yes, you have to, or a no, you still have to wait?
And is this with regard with children with respiratory disease?
I'm thinking this one may be in, in relationship to the criteria as it exists today, but maybe both.
Yeah, you, you really do have to meet the criteria and, and the reason why is we're trying hard to give the vaccine initially to individuals who are more likely to end up in a hospital or to die. And, and the number one risk factor really is age. And there are still wait lists of people 70 and now 65 and above waiting to get the vaccine. So it's just not fair. You know, that's, that, that's, that's the essence of it. I think there's a lot of people that really need the vaccine to make a good case and I agree with all of that. We're just anxiously awaiting more doses to make that possible.
Jennifer's a, a mother who's fearful. She has 12-year-old twins. She's been exposed, she says, four times, has been fortunate enough not to test positive, but, but she's scared. And, and she wants to know at age 51, when you might think she might be able to get the vaccine without listing any underlying conditions?
I, I, I can't say for sure. You know, listen, if I had to bet, this is just a bet, maybe a month down the road. It really just depends on how much vaccine comes. And if the feds tell us that production is ahead of schedule and we're getting more doses, you know, it'll make no one happier than us to be able to extend eligibility quicker.
Doc, we're getting to our, our final questions and thank you for staying with this. One of our first responders, healthcare workers writes, I work with ventilator-dependent and trach patients. Some also have other health issues as well. Should or can they be vaccinated? Are there accommodations in place for those that are vent-dependent and immobile, meaning they can't leave the home?
Yeah, so there, there's certainly eligible, anyone in that category likely receives home health services and, and anyone receiving or providing home health services is eligible right now. Many of the home health agencies have been given vaccine to go vaccinate clients like this and will be supplying more of them coming up. So the first question will be to ask the home health agency, do they have vaccine to give? If they don't, encourage them to enroll with us and we'll, we'll supply it that way.
And the, the final question from Terry, are there any risks for a chemo patient getting the vaccine?
We don't think so. We don't think so. There are certainly risks for getting COVID if you're a chemo patient. I mean, you're, anyone who's immunosuppressed has a very high risk of complications with COVID. There were immunosuppressed individuals in the vaccine trials that got the vaccine. They did well. There's absolutely no reason to think that there should be a risk. In fact, these, these patients really should be prioritized. The once, again, once, once we're able to include people with preconditions, they'll absolutely include people who have immunosuppression from chemotherapy or others. So I would really encourage people to do it. And if you're not eligible yet, I, I would get your questions answered now, be in a position so that you don't, you know, waste any time once you do get eligible.
And Chandra doesn't have a question, but she says, thank you, Dr. Cantor, exclamation point, very informative.
Thank you, Chandra. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Doc. We're going to get to Ginger Hunt, Doc. Of course, you're welcome to stay with us if you can, but we understand if you have to fly. And Ginger's going to talk to us about rural communities and the services provided by federally qualified health centers, of which she runs this nonprofit group. Ginger, thank you for waiting and welcome.
I thank you, Dee, for the kind words. And I, I would like to say to the audience, I'm not a hero. I'm simply a good old country girl with, who, whose creator gave a heart for providing access to our most vulnerable populations in Louisiana. And I've been doing that for 60-plus years. So I, I come to you today with a, a lot of knowledge about access learned from all my mistakes. Access to tests and vaccines, medical and mental health services. Access, access is defined by Webster, is freedom to obtain, to make use of or to participate in something, a right to equal treatment within a limited set of criteria and processes. So this fits right in to COVID tests, vaccinations and immunizations. Access is ranked nationally as the top, in the top 1% for word use in healthcare. Despite that ranking, it's a very elusive term. In some states like Louisiana, the right is defined by two different complex lengthy sets of criteria, the federal set and the state set. Understand why that's necessary, but this is sometimes confusing and makes us access elusive. An individual's right to service, it's no guarantee that they will receive that service. True access is different for every individual. I may live down the street, one block from a, a health center and still not be able to access that health center for various reasons. It may be disabilities, it may be no transportation, it, it may be that I have no one to bring me there or no family member to assist me. Individuals have a choice. They may choose not to or be unable to exercise their right. They may even be not eligible under established criteria. Demand may exceed supply. We just heard Dr. Cantor say that we have much more demand than we have supply of vaccine. So we know that that is a serious problem and it makes access elusive. Service may not be affordable. That's not the case in this situation as, as our president and our legislators have assured us that anyone can receive a vaccine. Access for Louisiana's most vulnerable population, that is the underinsured, the underserved, the impoverished rural areas in Louisiana, people that live in those areas, are often only able to access services through a federally qualified health center. Most of these federally qualified health centers are tax exempt nonprofit entities, but can be a public entity also. RKIM is one of those entities. And we have been operational since March of 1999. Currently, we are a system of 11 full-service health centers or FQHCs, which include RKIM Primary, Clinton, the main campus, four full-service FQHC school-based health centers, one on where, that are located, one on every campus in every school in East Louisiana Parish. And let me stop right here to explain what an FQHC school-based health center is. That is a full-service clinic that can provide primary care in primary care medical home for the students on that campus, for the family members, for the teachers, the support workers, or even for community members. And they keep families at work and children in school because they can receive all the services that they need there on the school campus. One FQHC school-based health center is portable and it is located in West Baton Rouge Parish. We have a full-service FQHC in East Baton Rouge Parish. We have two full-service FQHC sites in Livingston and one full-service site in Tanjapahoe. The system also includes 79 portable, mental health-only service sites, one in every school in Livingston and Tanjapahoe parishes and four in the West Baton Rouge Parish schools. This is access that was created because of needs following Hurricane Katrina and the great flood of 2016. This slide will, will show you the little dots on this blue slide map of Louisiana are represent the 55 FQHC organizations and site that have sites in 64 of the parishes in Louisiana. 71, 91, I'm sorry, 71.89% of the parent patients reported incomes of 100% or below poverty level. 58.5% of the patients reported were on Medicaid or other public assistance programs for health insurance access. They are represented by the Louisiana Primary Care Association and there are 37 FQHC organizations represented by LPTCA and two federally qualified look-alike. There are 300 individual sites and they serve over 400,000 patients. Community health centers expand services, provide access to existing services and deliver clinical excellence. They operate under a very strict set of guidelines that come down from the federal government. They provide a high-quality, affordable, comprehensive primary and preventive care to patients regardless of their ability to pay for services and their insurance status. In 2019 alone, we provided in Louisiana, 3,000, over 3,000, over 1 million visits, I'm sorry, and over 291,000 mental health visits, over 209,000 enabling and over 183 dental visits. We serve 3,959 veterans, over 2,000 agricultural and seasonal walkers, 26,000 homeless patients. Further responding to serp patients in a time of crisis, we experienced our first case of COVID on case of COVID on March the 9th, 2020. Louisiana's 39 community health organizations have risen to the challenge and have gone far above and beyond in meeting patients' needs. We have conducted testing, administered vaccines, collaborated with Louisiana and overrun hospitals by addressing the rise in demand for care, assessing patients, and conducting triage. We quickly redesigned clinical protocols, arranged, rearranged facilities, and are engaged in telehealth services. If you look to your right on this slide, you will see Southwest Louisiana Primary Care Center conducting COVID testing in Opelousas, Louisiana, and now they're conducting vaccinations. What telehealth has done for us is it has enabled us to provide more care for our patients while keeping them safe from exposure. Responding to COVID using the telehealth, this slide depicts what we've done since 2019 across the nation and across Louisiana. We increased from telehealth service usage from 43% in 2019 to 98% across the nation in 2021. The trend across Louisiana was that we were about 43% usage of telehealth in 2019. And in 2021, it increased to 75%. Just across RKM, it increased to 77%. FQHCs work in collaboration with many partners, the biggest one being the Louisiana Department Health Serving as a COVID vaccine distribution points. And, and FQHCs are critical to growing vaccination effort. Louisiana's community health centers are perfect partners for vaccine distribution because we have so many facilities across the state and they're mostly in underserved and urban areas where, where people don't have much access here. We have conducted staged events, the flu vaccines, done drive-through COVID testing, having process, a process in place which can be utilized for vaccinations. We have extensive experience in performing community outreach and patient education. And, and I think the, the selling point for FQHCs is that we hire people from the community. We have experienced knowledgeable providers and support staff who are not just providers and support staff, but the members of the community, trusted members. Ensuring that everybody has access to vaccine. We've used mostly Moderna in the vaccine distribution because it has less stringent freezing requirements and it has a greater shelf life. But we have received some Pfizer vaccines and have administered those as well. Primary care continues at the local level to administer vaccines across their five parish service area. Picture you see to your right is Dr. Gary Channing, RKM's site, mental health nurse practitioner, and he is the clinical director of mental health and a staunch supporter of people getting their vaccine. He has been advocating for vaccines since the onset of COVID. RKM personally, our clinics have provided over 10,517 tests. We did most of that through drive-through testing, which is still ongoing, and through events. Some of those events were partnerships with local first responders and our emergency prepared fairness teams. 19 vaccines, we received an allotment of 4,025. And I was told today before we got one that we have completed all of our 406 initial vaccines that were received and we have completed the second dose for all of, second doses for all of those. So that's a milestone for us. And, and while not a large number, I believe we're headed in the right direction as Dr. Cantor said. What, what are the constraints and the problems that we've had with the challenges? We sometimes get a 24-hour notice of vaccine availability. This certainly makes it very tough to schedule, to call and ensure that the, those scheduled will keep their appointments. We have, and, and I understand why they're a short notice because the state doesn't know most often when they're going to get, have vaccine availability and when they can get it out. So we, it's certainly understandable. However, it does create problems for those of us out here trying to get the vaccines in arms. Mass scheduling and confirming vaccine appointments has been a major issue in that it is so time consuming and we have limited staff to assign to do that, but it is a necessary part of assuring that vaccines get in arms. Time-consuming documentation to assure each vaccine is accounted for is an issue. EMRs were created to, and designed the program to report and subtract once doses of immunizations for children were given. And so when COVID came along, it, it was a whole different ballgame and we had to rewrite programs and get those set up quickly and so that we could track COVID. Quickly revamping clinical processes to accommodate rule changes. It's like you have to turn around on a dime. And as Dr. Cantor said, it's a necessary evil. You have to move fast and so you have to be ready to accommodate those rule changes. It, it is challenging, however. Inconsistencies in the state's expectations of vaccinators, and by this, I, I'm not criticizing the state, I, I am stating challenges that we have. Issues with angel doses. An angel dose is simply that some, some containers have more of a, more than a dose of a vaccine when the container is completed. So that we have a little bit left over in this dose, we have a little bit left over on the next dose. And those are considered, when you get enough to administer a full dose, are considered angel doses. So if we give an angel dose, that, that, there's no assurance from the state that we will get that second dose. If that, that dose is as a first dose, we are going to receive the total amount that we were allotted and no more. So we're concerned about that second dose. Managing and staffing shortage for mass vaccination events. We just simply have not enough people to staff for shortages and are, and are having difficulty amassing enough people to have mass vaccination events. So we will just reach out to our partners as we have done before and, and make use of them to take care of these shortages when we begin those mass evacuations. All these things are challenging, but let me say to you, audience and panelists, the, these challenges are not something that we can't overcome. Louisiana has faced many crises, the hurricanes, the flooding, and many other crises. We have joined hands, consistently reached out to take care of those who are unable to take care of themselves. And as a state have overcome, we will, with the help of the Lord, overcome this as well. Stay safe. Keep your neighbors safe. And pray that this will be over soon. Thank you so much for having me.
One question for you. Do you feel optimistic specifically as it relates to the rural area where it's been hard to get services and hard to, to generate the access that you, that you've spoken about as we approach the one-year anniversary coming up in just a, a month? What are you seeing in the rural areas that relates to service?
We're, we are able to get in arms every vaccine that we get, just like Dr. Cantor said, you know, across the state. We get less, less vaccines than others. However, we have been receiving vaccines and that's a plus. So I, I am optimistic that whatever they send us, we'll be able to use and we will get it in arms quick.
Ginger, thank you for being with us. Thanks to Daniel and to Barbara for being with us and interpreting today. And of course, also to, to Dr. Cantor. That is all the time we have for today. Thank you to the attendees who stayed with us for this very informative virtual town hall. For those joining us on desktop, laptop, or tablet, when you close your window, we have a very brief survey. It'll only take a few seconds that will pop up and we'd like you to fill it out if you have some time. It'll help us make these presentations better. And again, if you find yourself struggling to cope with COVID-19 stress and how you can find help, or you're simply interested in learning more, please visit the website at conquercovid19.la or text REACHOUT to 741741. And don't worry about trying to get all the resource contact information down or any of the information you saw or heard. This program is being recorded and a link will be posted and emailed to those who, who attended for future access. We hope you have a great afternoon. Stay safe.